Good evening and welcome to the July 10th regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. I hope everyone is enjoying the nice balmy summer weather out there. I know I'm getting a good suntan getting out in the sun. As we observe our moment of silence, as we customarily do, I would just like everyone to hold in their heart the grief of our fellow supervisor, Mr. Phil Calabro. He is not here this evening. Last Monday evening, his wife passed away. So I'm sure he would appreciate any expressions of sympathy that people would like to extend to him. We miss him and love him. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. And please join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There's no special actions this evening. That brings us to our first round of public comment. If you'd like to give public comments, please come to the microphone. Tell us what community you're with and we'll give you a chance to speak. I would ask that Newtown residents get a chance to go first. Okay. I just see maybe a non Newtown resident, so please come up. State your name and where you're from.
(inaudible).
Yes, there is a button on the microphone there. Yeah, if it goes on, yep, there you go.
Hi, my name is Carla Jones. Nice to meet all of you. I appreciate the time talking with you this evening. So I came tonight to ask Newtown Township to please do a traffic study at the intersection of the bypass and Summit Trace Road. Summit Trace Road is the road that you go into to go to the Giant Shopping Center. And so I live in Summit and I've just noticed, I kind of refer to it as the wah-wah west, the way the cars are coming in and driving and they're now coming off, they've been doing this for a while, come off 413, they use Summit Trace Road, they come up to the bypass and often do a rolling stop and turn right. One of the things that happened recently was I was in, if you know the two lanes going out to the bypass, I was in the right-hand lane with a number of other cars and a truck just came from the very back, comes barreling up, crosses over all three lanes, and I say three lanes because there is the shoulder that now people are using it for a turn lane. It's become a common use of the road. I think people think it's the norm, it's a wider road, then I think it's wider, I think there's made the way, they think it's an extra road. Last night I attended the Middletown Township Traffic Commission's meeting and this was brought up, we were talking about this. And one of the things I'd like to see happen is the traffic study really is to help determine how we can make it safer. I would like to be able to see sidewalks put in so people could go over to and from Newtown and back and forth as we always, it happens many times during the daytime. I often see, I saw a couple last week, they just went with the green light and they went right on over with the traffic. I have some photographs and I did submit a PowerPoint presentation to all of you to show you some of the things I was concerned about, so I thought that'd make it a little easier to give you real examples. But there was a gentleman who went to the grocery store, had his groceries in hands, he comes out of the Giant, he goes over and there's four accessible ramps on the bypass, but they go nowhere. They just go to grass, you know, and the pole is there to push to go over in the light and people are walking in the street to access the ramps, to go over. And so the ramps are there, the poles are there to push the light, but there's no timed light to go back and forth. And with the, I think cars often come through Summit Trace and Summit Trace Road, the road around the development, they come there because they're trying to avoid the, at the top of 413, they're trying to avoid the no turn on red. This is the only crosswalk that has been designated by PennDOT. I mean, so the rest of the streets, you know, they don't want you to cross over, which I understand, which is great, but it'd be great to make it a whole lot safer. One of the things I asked for my PowerPoint, I was looking to develop a cooperative, collaborative relationship with Newtown and Middletown because Middletown has on their plans, they want to make Middletown a walk-in community and the ideas they're going to be putting in, the goal was to put in sidewalks. But part of the entrance to Summit is the property of Newtown Township and part of it comes into Langhorne. Doublewood Road is part of yours, that's why I'm here next, it's really, if you don't know, you wouldn't think it's Newtown, but it is Newtown. And so just because of the traffic, traffic is just really has increased because I think just always on 413, it's very busy. So I was just looking at ways, what could I do as a citizen, what could I reach out to and talk to people about? One, the goal would be to create a really safe way to go back and forth over to Newtown and Newtown comes to us. You're probably aware that they're building on the Stone Meadows Farm, they're building there. Well, one of the, I believe what's going to happen is there's going to be a pathway on 413 that goes to the park. And I thought, wouldn't it be great to have a way for people to come over from Newtown, walk down the sidewalk of Summit Trace Road and go over to the park, you know, bring your bikes, bring your, you know, bring your strollers, bring whatever, you know. And so I just was hoping to, for you to consider doing a traffic study and having a light put in, a timed light, so people could go back and forth and work with the Middletown Township. So in a sense, part of, you would have to do part of the sidewalk from the, and then move it down to, and meet them where they do their part of the sidewalk. That's what I was hoping for. I don't represent Middletown Township, I have no formal role, I'm just a citizen that liked to see safe passage. I documented this gentleman, this is back in 2019, I documented this, he was coming across from the Newtown bypass side and that was interesting is that has a no turn on red side, where on Langhorne side, there is a no turn, that you can turn on the red, but over there you cannot. So this gentleman, this older gentleman with the cane, was walking across the bypass, appropriately so had the light and the drivers are on his heels. And I'm sitting there in my car and I'm, I can't turn left because I'm waiting till he comes all the way across, you know. If there were a proper light there, a timed light, then we could get people, I think, going back and forth, I think comfortably and safely and, so that's what I was hoping for.
We did receive your PowerPoint. I received it this afternoon by the time I could sit down and look at it. So maybe this is something the Planning Commission could look at, research that.
You know, our towns are literally about two seconds away. If you time, how long it takes you to go from that light, right, over to Newtown, you know, and it's just something I'd like to see for the communities. I also, so there are three things I wanted, the first thing was the sidewalks, the timed lights, and then also looking at the right turn on red. I'm not trying to stop at the right turn on red, I'm not trying to do that. I just went to, it just, maybe you could reach out to Middletown Township, they're going to ask to put some lines on the shoulder to help maybe to avoid some of that issue. And then, you're familiar with Doublewoods Road, I'm sure?
I am.
It's on the side, it's a, so Doublewoods Road, people will come up, they'll stop and then they roll forward to, because you kind of have to come forward to kind of get yourself in line. But I'm not sure if people are always clear who's supposed to go first. You know, the people who have the right of way are the people who are in line with the boxes, for example, okay? We're that far right lane, we are the ones who have the right of way. They don't necessarily always know that. One day, I was, I literally was watching this, a car was in the left hand of the two lanes of the Summit Trace Road and he wanted to go over to Doublewoods Road, well, he just cut right in front of the person who's in the right-hand lane, just, and if you're not prepared, you know, for this to happen, that kind of, you know, you're looking straight to go forward and all of a sudden a car comes from, you know, and makes a left-hand turn from the other lane, you know, I think it'd be a little disconcerting, you know? So those are my thoughts. So anyway, I do appreciate your time and if I can be of help, I'd be, you know, happy to be, if you need more photographs, I could be of help.
Okay. I believe you gave us your email and your phone number.
I gave, yes, I gave my email, I will follow up, yes, it came from my email, but I will follow up with my telephone number too, would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I really do appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to minor approvals, of which there are none, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Peggy Driscoll is here for the Planning Commission. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Commission, here to give you a brief synopsis of our July 2nd meeting. We had, what we had on our agenda was the JMZO amendments, the Joint Municipal Zoning Ordinance amendments. First was electric charging stations. The members were in agreement that this proposed amendment will allow for charging stations in our jointure and will be easily revised as technology changes. We feel it is important to make this service easily available to our residents. We recommend that the supervisors adopt this ordinance. Next, we had outdoor advertising signage. Our planner, Michelle Fountain, prepared a map that shows where off-premise signage would be allowed. There are certain restrictions in our current ordinance that restrict this signage. It cannot be within 1,000 feet of the Newtown bypass and it cannot be within 500 feet of residentially zoned districts. The location of these signs is thus very limited. With the board's permission, we would like Ms. Fountain to continue with this research to help us find suitable locations for off-premise signage so that we can address the need and possibly avoid future challenges to the JMZO. It should be noted that there is one billboard in Wrightstown Township, which is an existing nonconformity, but will be permitted with the ordinance change. To be clear, this is a proposed addition to the current signage ordinance. Everything permitted is still permitted and everything prohibited is still prohibited. And that was all we had. Any questions?
Any questions for Peggy?
I have a question about the signage in Wrightstown. There's a billboard on Route 413. Isn't it true that the reason why we're in a jointure is so that at least one township should have an option for something, a use, like billboards? For example, because Wrightstown has quarries, Newtown is not required to have quarries. And the same idea would, I thought, apply to billboards. Since Wrightstown was agreeable to saying, well, we will allow billboards in that section where the billboard currently is, then we don't have to do anything else. I don't understand why we have to look for places to put, more places to put billboards in Newtown.
We discussed this at the meeting, the billboard on 413 in Wrightstown has been there for, I believe, 40 years. We're still discussing this at planning. I think all townships feel that the three of us all need to have the same sign ordinance that Wrightstown Township has.
Well, that's the point I don't understand because then why don't we have each township have a quarry use, that sort of thing? I mean, it's ridiculous. I see, I thought that was the benefit of having a jointure where all three townships do not have to have every use. And I just, Wrightstown doesn't care that it has a billboard there. I don't think Wrightstown is looking for other townships to allow billboards, they're perfectly fine with the way it is. It's my point, is my...
Well, I think the other townships felt that maybe we need, that it needed to be shared equally among the other two townships since there is already one existing in Wrightstown. But as I said, we are, you know, Michelle's preparing a map for us and we're trying to be careful. I don't want to say too much that, we haven't really made any definite decisions on anything, we are still discussing it, but Wrightstown has had the billboard for 40 years. Do we all need to have a use for that? Apparently, yes, but some of us on the planning did disagree with it. So we're just going to continue to...
Well, if Ms. Fountain is still researching, is continuing to research, maybe we ask a question about the legality of having to, of needing to have that same billboard use in Newtown.
It already does exist.
In Wrightstown.
And I'm, Papa Makefield has a, they don't have a billboard there, but that's what the discussion is, should all three townships be required to have it or just since one exists in the jointure, is that already sufficient?
I think this is a good point that Planning Commission's making, and I think it's a question for them. I think we need to have that discussion with ourselves at the jointure, probably, it's my opinion. John's right, there's, you know, part of the jointure idea was to protect the three townships together. I think it's a legitimate question to ask. I wasn't at the meeting where they discussed it, so I don't know, but I think we probably should.
I wouldn't put any words in her mouth, but I did have a side discussion with Michelle at the Planning Commission meeting and she agreed. She doesn't understand why it's necessary for Newtown to have places for billboards when there's already one place in Wrightstown. It's covered by the jointure. So, you know, you can ask her to do anything and she'll do it, but, you know, I think, as Kyle said, we are the ones that need to decide this, basically.
Correct, correct. Well, we're going to discuss it probably in one of our upcoming meetings and then ultimately, you know, we'll make a recommendation to the board and then the board will be the ones to make the decision.
I don't believe the jointure's meeting until the first Thursday in September.
Okay.
But we ought to certainly have an opinion by then.
I agree.
Yep. Any other questions or comments for Peggy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along to member reports. I attended the Planning Commission meeting that we were just talking about. I attended the NFA meeting where, the regular monthly meeting on Monday, last Monday of the month. And they had an awards present, had a number of award presentations for length of service. And I just really appreciate it when I, public service, when I hear that we have volunteer firefighters that have been doing it for 35, 40 years. And that's, that's real dedication and real, a real service to our communities. So if you meet a firefighter in your, in your trips around or you see one, thank them, thank them for their service. The other one, there was no jointure meeting this, this past month, so I can't report on that, but there was one other thing I'd like to report on and that's the fire services agreement. And we have a fire services agreement with the Borough to help fund our fire services, our emergency services. And the fire services agreement that we have with the Borough is expiring December 31st of this year. I don't think we want to make any big changes, but we do want to review it with the Borough and there's a process for that review in the agreement. So I believe we have a tentative date of Thursday, July 28th, if I have the date right. But it's Thursday in July, last Thursday in July. And Ellen and I will be attending. Like I said, I don't want to make any big changes, but we do want to review where we are and where we're going for the next couple of years. Vice Chair, do you have a report?
I'd like to talk a little about, about our fire services. Shortly, we will hopefully be ordering two new fire trucks, a pumper and a ladder truck. The Fire Association's trucks do have an expiration date where mileage and wear and tear kick in. It will take anywhere from 40 to 48 months in order to get these trucks. So obviously, we're going to order them soon. We can do this because of the township's commitment to putting money in the budget for capital expenses every year and the slight raise in taxes. This year was mostly for emergency services, whether it be for firefighters or equipment. And we're not talking about a small amount of money here, we're talking about $2.5, $3 million. So this is a subject that we'll be talking about in the upcoming months, along with a study to build a safe firehouse. We don't have a safe firehouse, I don't know if anybody knows that. Safe firehouses have different sections that are safe and unsafe. We don't have that.
Cold and hot.
Cold and hot, yes. So I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. Also, I just want to say about the intersection between Middletown and Newtown, that definitely is a problem. I travel that way all the time. I see it, you're right, I've seen many major mess-ups there, so definitely interested in seeing what we can do about it and we will. I think as far as the billboard ordinance is concerned, that the only location, the new billboard ordinance from the jointure has only locations in Newtown. We ask that all three municipalities have this burden by redefining the appropriate zones for it. This is not merely the old sign ordinance. That's it. Thank you.
Getting out of the idea of having to have one in Newtown, as we talked. Mr. Secretary of Treasury?
The only thing I have to report is tomorrow, there's going to be a webinar from PSATs using traffic calming measures to control speeding. It's at noon and it's free for all supervisors who are members of PSATs, so if you'd like to participate in that webinar, look it up on the PSATs. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, anything?
I have nothing to report, next one.
That moves us along to the public hearing. Mr. Sander?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a public hearing this evening on the conditional use application of PB Newtown LLC. Prelimarily, I will mark Board Exhibit B1 will be the application. Exhibit B for Board Two will be the May 29th, 2024 letter from CKS engineers reviewing the conditional use application. Exhibit B3 will be the proof of posting of the property with notice of the conditional use hearing this evening. And Exhibit B4 will be the proof of publication of notice of this evening's hearing in the advance of Bucks County as required by the municipality's planning code. Mr. McGinnis is here representing the applicant. I would ask in advance of the public, is there anybody here who is opposed to this particular application? Okay, let the record deflect, no response. Mr. McGinnis, in that regard, because there's no other parties to this matter, it would be appropriate if you could proceed with a, an offer of proof or a proffer of evidence and then ask your witnesses if they would have testified accordingly.
Very good, Mr. Sander. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of the applicant, PB Newtown LLC. If it's the board's pleasure, I can have Mr. Williams sworn in at the outset and then have an affirmation and statement via colloquy following my summary.
That would be appropriate. Let's, let's have him sworn in, please.
Do you swear? Do you swear or affirm the testimony of the truth? Or would you plead enough about the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you state your name?
Yes, state your name, please. John Williams.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Mike McGinnis, again from Begley Carlin here on behalf of the applicant, is PB Newtown LLC. The subject property is 20 West Road. This is located in the Newtown Shopping Center and it is the home of the now-closed, unfortunately, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. This is the portion of the shopping center which is adjacent to the athletic fields. The particular unit space which we're here to discuss is approximately 30,000 square feet, just over 30,000 square feet, and it is immediately adjacent to the Staples in the shopping center, which is 23,820 square feet. We are here seeking conditional use approval for a C6 use, which is specifically defined in the township as an indoor athletic facility. This is for a indoor pickleball court. There is no site work, this is just to fill the space, which is, again, the former space of the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. We believe that this is a great business for the township to fill this space for reasons which we're going to enunciate in a second. It is the area of the shopping center which is the least heavily trafficked portion. If the board will recall, a few years ago, the shopping center conducted a study regarding various points of interest and the parking volume in the different sections. This particular area has 264 parking spaces based upon that study and even when the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond was fully operational, this never exceeded 50% in terms of the volume. So again, we're always mindful of traffic in the township, traffic in the shopping centers, but this particular area of the shopping center is and has been primarily vacant from a parking standpoint. With respect to the use, we are proposing, as you can see in the plans which were distributed as part of our application, 11 courts. The courts are on the first floor in this building. We would have a mezzanine and a viewing area proposed for people who primarily have completed their matches and would like to relax for a few minutes, but all of the courts would be located on the ground level. The maximum, if you do the math, if you have four doubles matches on the 11 courts, at any given time, there may be 48 players located within the space. And again, that is in a circumstance where every court is full simultaneously. We have minimal employees with this use. We are going to average two per shift with a maximum of four employees. The peak hours of operation are 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. and then again, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. So I would submit particularly with respect to Staples, which would be the neighboring use, it's fairly synergistic in terms of when the peak hours would be located in the shopping center. There are no pieces of fitness equipment, this was a question that came up in the Planning Commission, there's no commercial kitchen or anything like that. There would be things like an interior pro shop. And members, if you have a question about what this would look like, there would be a membership option and then members would book the courts by the hour. There is a monthly fee that would be paid and then individuals who would be members with PB Newtown could do things like lessons, there could be some small corporate outings, some team-building events, but otherwise, it would be what you would presume as a standard membership pickleball operation. The conditional use standards in the township for a C6 use are fairly straightforward. We exceed the minimum lot size of five acres. There is a notation that the use shall not permit amusement parks, wild animals, or zoos. That is certainly not occurring in this instance and since there is no outdoor athletic field... There is a notation that the use shall not permit amusement parks, wild animals, or zoos. That is certainly not occurring in this instance. And since there is no outdoor athletic field operation, the subsection with note C6.3 is not applicable. The final note in terms of condition relates to parking, and we have a settlement stipulation that had been entered into previously with the township, which applies for the shopping center on the whole. So I would submit that we meet the specific criteria under the C6 use. I also would submit that we meet the general criteria outlined for conditional use applications in the township. The reality is that this is a vacant big box in the shopping center. This is, again, I would submit a better use both for the shopping center and for the other tenants, as well as for the township than other uses which could be permitted to be operated at this location. With that, I would like to, again, I had Mr. Williams sworn in, but I would like to have him verify the veracity of the statements and the representations that I made, and then we'd be happy to provide any more specific information. The board's pleasure. So thank you this evening. All right. Mr. Williams, you were sworn in. Can you again just please state your name for the record?
John Williams.
Okay. And Mr. Williams, you are a member, in fact, of PB Newtown LLC. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're the proposed tenant for the subject property we're here to discuss this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you heard the testimony and the summary that I provided the board. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And if you were, in fact, called to testify, would you so adopt the summary that I provided the board as your own testimony this evening?
Yes, I would.
Okay. I have nothing further at this time. Thank you.
Quickly, Mr. McGinnis, the hours of operation. I was reviewing the Planning Commission's recommendation, and they had 6:00 a.m. to midnight seven days a week. You said different hours.
They said the peak hours.
Oh, the peak hours.
Yes. The peak hours would be 6:00 to 10:00, and then 6:00 to 10:00 again.
Okay. But the general hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to midnight seven days a week.
That's correct. And I believe it was addressed at the Planning Commission that it's very unlikely that there's any significant volume after 10:00 p.m., but basically, the brand standard setup would be 6:00 a.m. to midnight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, any other witnesses, any other testimony that you would ask?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. At this point, it would be appropriate for board questions for the applicant.
The only question I had was the hours, because I thought I heard peak hours, I was getting peak hours and operational hours.
Sorry for the confusion.
But any others? Questions?
I have a question. Is there somebody, is there staffing going to be there at those late hours, or does somebody have a key fob that they can just walk in?
No, absolutely, we'll be staffed.
It will be staffed.
Yeah. Mr. Williams, why don't you go up to the microphone and...
Yes, we'll be staffed from 6:00 a.m. until midnight every day.
Mr. Mack?
Can you tell me the fee for membership?
Yes, sir. It's going to be approximately $119 to $129 a month at this particular location.
Any discount for senior citizens?
Sure. We will, like, our practice, we've been in health and wellness field for quite a few years in the planet fitness world, and we always discount for seniors, for first responders. I've seen a gentleman in the room, military, of course, so yes, there will be discounts.
Great. You know, my wife plays pickleball through North Hampton, but these are outdoor courts. You're using indoor courts which can be used in the wintertime.
Correct.
And I don't know if the park and recs department offers pickleball, but is there any possibility, for example, of parks and rec having a pickleball option that would use your courts somehow?
It's certainly a possibility. In fact, we've already talked to a few local high schools that are bringing on pickleball as a club sport, which we think is going to move towards an actual sport in high school and in college, and they're all going to need facilities to play. So we'll pick our dead times during the day for our members, and that's when we'll fill spots like that.
Because I'm assuming there'd be a lot of people who may not want to pay $119, $20 a month, but, you know, may sign up with the parks and rec department for a limited number of plays, for example. I don't know how that works, but that might be interesting things.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a question. I just want to say, this is a great creative use of that space. Glad it's not another restaurant or a bank, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
It's kind of a no-brainer to me, actually. Any other comments from the board? How about from the, is it...
Yeah, it would be appropriate to ask for a public comment at this time, Mr. Chairman. Is there any public comment on this application? Yes, ma'am. You have to come up to the microphone, identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, Carla Jones. I was just wondering, will you let people come in from the public and watch the games? Or it's just people that are members?
Well, we haven't thought that through. Probably for the tournaments, we'll talk, car, once every quarter, we'll let the public in, especially if you have a family member or a guest playing. But generally speaking, it's going to be for membership only.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, it would be appropriate for the board to entertain a motion, and I will be happy to...
Be happy to frame a motion for it.
Frame for the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to grant the application of PB Newtown LLC for a conditional use to allow an athletic facility, use C6, at 20 West Road in the Newtown Shopping Center. That is in the PC Planned Commercial Zoning District. This relief would be subject to the applicant's compliance with the following conditions. First, that the applicant comply with all of the comments set forth in the CKS Engineers' Review Letter dated May 29th, 2024. Second, the hours of operation will be 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., which is midnight, seven days a week. Third, two employees are anticipated per shift for three shifts, and the maximum number of employees on any shift will be four. Fourth, no noxious, toxic, or corrosive fumes, smoke, odor, or dust will be produced by the applicant. Further, there will be no loud noise or vibration, or objectionable heat, glare, or radiation beyond the property line, or any other objectionable condition that may endanger public health and safety generated by this use. Should the situation arise where such dangerous, unhealthy, or undesirable conditions come to exist on this property, the applicant must immediately notify the landlord and the township of this condition and explain how it intends to rectify or mediate these unwanted conditions. Fifth, hazardous and waste materials may not be stored on-site and must be disposed of properly as required by law. Sixth, a copy of the commercial lease between the applicant and landlord will be provided to the Board of Supervisors prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Seventh, this use must be fully ADA compliant with state and federal law. Eight, all fees and costs due to Newtown Township as the result of their review of the conditional use application shall be paid in full to the township prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Ninth, a trash pickup will be coordinated with the other Newtown Shopping Center tenants so as not to interfere with the normal flow of traffic or operation of those businesses. And ten, all deliveries will be scheduled for times when the surrounding businesses are not open in the morning or evening. The size of the delivery vehicles will be appropriate to the driveways and parking areas so as not to interfere with the operation of the businesses. And that is the motion for consideration by the board.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the board?
I have one.
Sure.
Are you going to have any food or luncheonette or anything like that?
There was testimony at the Planning Commission of, like, snacks and Gatorade, but nothing akin to a commercial kitchen on-site.
I remembered that. Okay. Let me call the question. All those in favor of approving this conditional use for PB Newtown LLC, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck.
The next item under public hearings, Mr. Chairman, is consideration by the board of removing the public hearing for the LIOLI overlay district ordinance from the table. If the board recalls at its last meeting, a public hearing was opened on this ordinance to consider it. Discussion led to a motion to table the ordinance, which passed. Thus, the public hearing and discussion of the ordinance is on the table. In order for the ordinance and public hearing to resume, it would have to be taken off the table by a motion of the board and an affirmative vote of three of the Board of Supervisors. So I would ask at this point if there is a motion to remove the public hearing on the LIOLI overlay district ordinance from the table. Hearing no motion, the public hearing and the ordinance will, consideration of the ordinance will remain on the table until the board's August 14th meeting, and then we will reconsider removing it from the table at that time. Because that action was taken by the board, or rather, the discussion was not removed from the table, it renders Item C under public hearings unnecessary this evening because that would be conditioned on the discussion being removed from the table. So that concludes the public hearings for this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I have no land development this evening. We do have some reports of officials. So beginning with our engineers' report. Mr. Kandari.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it's okay with the board, I'll go through these two items on the agenda and then just mention some notable updates in the engineers' report for this month.
Yes.
The first item is the Lower Dolington Road Multi-Use Trail Payment Certificate Number Seven. This payment certificate includes work that has been completed, which we have reviewed and agree that that payment can be made to the contractor. Therefore, we are recommending payment to associated paving contractors in the amount of $5,782. And I'll also note that the amount of $21,875.21 is being held for the 2% retainage.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion about this? I did one question. This is for work that was done and decided, mutually decided that this work had been completed.
That's right, yes.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Am I correct in saying that there's still some work that is in dispute that hasn't been completed?
That's right.
And is that $21,000 sort of cover...
That's retained, that's being held.
Our expenses if we have to complete the work? Is that what that's for?
It's retainage that, for completed work that they have finished that we hold, yeah, as a security.
But that's just, if I may, just for this release, correct? The 2% retainage that you stated, the 20-some thousand, that's for this release only?
That is for the current payment certificate number seven.
Right. Payment certificate number seven. There are plenty of other payment certificates that are in dispute that we are, have money to cover. And we are negotiating with the contractor on those change orders and payment certificates. And, but I think this is one that was clearly performed properly, signed off on by the township engineer, and is appropriate to be released. It doesn't have an effect on the other provisions and other change orders that we're discussing with the contractor right now.
Mr. Sanders.
Just a question that you knew I was going to ask. There's that big divot in the road is right by Roberts Ridge Park at the intersection there, and it's concerning. There's cones there, people are going in the ditch. Is there any action that's going to be taken to address that?
Yeah, we've been coordinating with the Public Works to look into how we can address that. You know, I, it's questionable if it pertains to this project that we're referring to now or possible some of the roadwork that was previously completed, but we are looking at options to address that because...
Yeah. I call that the Dolington Ditch, and it's getting bigger and longer as people continue to drive over the cones and filled up with water and mud. I was under the impression that there's something hiding underneath the ditch. The reason why it was created was for some kind of, something underground that had to do with the trail. When the trail was done, there was, explained to me, I didn't understand it, that the reason why this, was this indentation was somehow related to some underground...
There's...
Water tank. It escapes me what's really going on over there.
Yeah, there's an infiltration trench that was installed for the trail that is in that location, and so they have the...
So the reason why there is this problem is because it was part of the trail, not to harass road people. So I'm just saying, I have to do that because my son told me this is a meme, just saying, that I think it has to do more with the trail than with the, with the roadwork, because I'm under the impression that the road repavers were given instructions to create this Dolington Ditch in the first place.
We can explore the options to get it repaired. You're right, it was expanded in that area to include the infiltration trench for the trail, and then the road was paved after the fact. So, you know, we're going to explore all options to have it filled in and repair it. So, you know, we can remove the cones, and there's no more mud, as you say.
Great.
I would just like to say, we have to do that. Like, it's not a question. It's hazardous to drivers. They could lose a tire very easily.
Well, I'm glad I have an off-road Jeep Wrangler, so I'm not concerned. I'll drive over it every day if I need to, so it doesn't bother me.
We have a motion. I believe we have a motion and a second on this. Anybody keeping track? Okay, yes, we do. We've had discussion from the board. Do we have any discussion from the public? No other drivers on Dolington Road? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving Payment Certificate Number Seven for the Lower Dolington Road Multi-Use Trail, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries 3-1.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to request for authorization to solicit bids for the Business Commons Sidewalk Project. The bid documents for the project are being finalized, and at this time, we would like to request authorization to advertise for bid. Just a little background, the township is performing sidewalk construction within the existing gaps at the Township Business Commons, as well as additional locations along Lower Dolington Road and North Sycamore Street. In general, the work consists of the concrete sidewalk, stamped concrete sidewalk, replacement and construction of ADA ramps, trash receptacles, trees, and the construction of infiltration trenches, and all the necessary restorations that that work will require. I'll also note that the project is being partially funded by PennDOT's Multimodal Transportation Fund and the PA Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account Grant. So if the board concurs, we would look to receive recommendation to authorize bids, solicit bids.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion from the board? I have two. Do you have an idea of how much, and maybe Mr. Lewis or Ms. McGovern knows, how much our grant, how much the grants totaled?
Yes. The Multimodal Transportation Fund grant was awarded in the amount of $873,000, and the DCED Local Share Grant was awarded in the amount of $534,221.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And my other question is, the older I get, the more I need a bench. I noticed you had some, in general, the work consists of, but is not limited to. But benches aren't listed. Is there a possibility of adding benches to the plan?
There are a couple benches that are included in the bid documents as if and where directed. The reason it's advertised, going to be advertised like that is because we do have very limited right-of-way space with this project. So we're going to word it like that. So we can, after the sidewalks are installed, we can walk the trail and the sidewalk and see where the best possible locations would be for the sidewalks and if they're appropriate for those locations.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I noticed you have a base bid and what's the other, what are they called?
Alternates.
Alternate bids. And under the alternate bid, I guess there's a piece of sidewalk that connects Lower Dolington at the end along...
Yorkshire Drive.
Yorkshire Drive.
That's right.
The sidewalk going up. I hope that we would be able to do that extension. And it all, I guess, depends on what the bids are, correct?
So just in an update, you are getting that information from the memo. Since this memo was sent out, we did receive comments from PennDOT that they will not allow the alternate bids. So we did revise it. It will just be one base bid. But as I mentioned, those dollar amounts for the grant totaling, you know, close to 1.4 million. The cost estimate that we have prepared for all of the work is about $860,000. So, you know, we're confident that the bids will come in and we'll have the grant funds to complete all the work.
Of course, I recall that the Lower Dolington Trail itself was supposed to go all the way up to that intersection past, what's it called, Upper? Past New Haven into, and that, we didn't have enough money for that. But with this sidewalk, does it go all the way up to that road? Or it's not a trail, it's just a narrow sidewalk.
We're filling in a small gap that exists there between Yorkshire and runs along Lower Dolington.
But the original plan for the trail, it crosses the road. Why did the trail cross the road? Because it goes to the other side to Hillhaven, is it? Or New Haven?
There's a Hillhaven and a New Haven.
Goes across the Hillhaven and then, I guess, on the other side of the road, that's where the trail was supposed to go. Is that correct?
I believe you're referring to, I guess, the comprehensive trail plan.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I mean, those are projects we can certainly explore with the township if, you know, we want to look to continue the trail.
Okay, well, that's a problem for the future, and I won't be around for that, so, no problem.
Any other questions? All right. Any comments from the public?
This is on this motion, Mr. Chairman?
This is on this motion.
This is on the motion to solicit bids, authorize the engineer solicit bids for the Business Commons Sidewalk Project, correct? That's what public comment's being asked for at this point? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the advertisement of the Business Commons Sidewalk Project, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as I mentioned, I'll give some notable updates on the projects listed in our monthly engineers' report. So we'll start with the capital projects. The Liquid Fuels Road Program has started construction. We did issue the notice to proceed on June 26th. The subcontractor has started working on the concrete portion of the project, some curb and curb ramps. They expect to begin paving operations in early August. I've been coordinating with the township staff to continue to get two-week look-ahead schedules that we can provide to the township so they can be aware of, you know, where they'll be working, where there'll be possible no parking. But just wanted to note that that project has started. The crosswalk projects, the Sycamore Street and Silo Drive Crosswalk Permit Plan is expected to be submitted to PennDOT this week. And the Tara Drive Crosswalk Permit Plan, we did receive comments again on June 28th. They have all been addressed. The new comments were to add a third flashing beacon as well as some safety lighting on one of the poles. Those comments have all been addressed. They are back in the hands of PennDOT. We are expected to get an approval this week from them. The Wawa has started construction. That has been ongoing. We have had inspectors on site. I know Mr. Mack was asking me earlier. And construction has been ongoing. No issues thus far. And those were the notable updates for this month's engineering report. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
Thanks for that report. Yeah, I did have some question from a resident. I guess she wants to be concerned that whatever was in the final plan for construction that Wawa is adhering to that plan. Is that what your engineering people do when they do these inspections to make sure it complies with the plan as approved by this board?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. I can't read my own writing. So the permit plans for both Silo and Sycamore and Tara and Newtown Yardley Road should both be in by the end of the week? Or the one is already in and the other?
That's what we're hoping for, yes.
And there's, I guess, there's some signatures that are required.
So the Tara Drive plan, since we got this latest round of comments, we've been coordinating with PennDOT as we have been the whole time, throughout the whole process. And they have agreed to do a cursory review of the plan, which is what they're doing now. So rather than go through a whole resubmission, we're working to make sure that we address the comments. So that way, when we go back to Mr. Lewis to get his signature, we know that there's not going to be any issues and we can submit it and receive the permit.
Okay. Then what happens next?
We hopefully get the approval for both locations and we continue with the bid documents. You know, we're hoping to request, you know, if we can put all the documents together before the next meeting in August, we would request authorization to bid and then look to award a contractor in one of the upcoming meetings after that.
So the bid process is something like what we just did with the...
Yeah, we would have to request authorization to bid the project.
I hope that's done at the next, we have a goal of having that done in the next...
I do too, yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. We will go ahead and go to the solicitors' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report this evening is the request of Newtown Bucks Associates, which is the owner of the Newtown Shopping Center, for an extension of a variance that was granted to the owner of the property for the Blue Point Grill Patio Expansion. The relief was granted back in June, dated June 1st of 2023. They have yet to pull a permit for the patio council, who happens to be Mr. McGinnis, pulling double duty this evening, submitted a letter dated June 13th, 2024, requesting a one-year extension of the relief that was granted by the zoning hearing board. In somewhat of a quirk, the Joint Municipal Zoning Ordinance provides that while the zoning hearing board can grant relief, it expires. And if it expires, any applicant can come back to the governing body, not the zoning hearing board, the governing body, and ask for no more than one extension of up to one year. And that is what this applicant is requesting. So if the boards of a mind, it would be a motion to approve the request of Newtown Bucks Associates LP for a one-year extension of its variance relief for the Blue Point Grill Patio Expansion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the board? Seeing none, any discussion from the public? On the Blue Point Grill? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the request for Newtown Bucks Associates LP for one-year extension on variance relief at Three West Road, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second and last item on our report is board consideration to authorize the solicitor to draft an amendment to the Joint Municipal Zoning Ordinance to provide that all uses in the LI/OLI overlay district are uses permitted by conditional use. Recall that in its current form, and this ordinance is still on the table here in Newtown, in its current form, it provides for certain apartment uses by right. This authorization would allow me to draft an ordinance that would provide for those uses by conditional use, which would give this board an extra layer of protection to attempt to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare if an application for such use came in to the township. If the boards of a mind, it would be a motion to authorize the solicitor to draft an amendment to provide for all uses in the LI/OLI overlay district to be permitted by conditional use.
I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board?
I just have a comment. Although I understand the idea here, I agree with the idea. I don't like the overlay, so I'm going to vote no because I don't want to pay our solicitor to approve something I don't want to pass anyway.
Right, understood. That makes sense. I do believe this is something that the Planning Commission recommended to us and that they, I was at the last Planning Commission meeting and they talked about how they wondered how we got to buy right from conditional use. So they would, I'm sure this would make them happy that it's conditional use. And they did recommend that we pass the ordinance. Any other discussion? Yes, go ahead, John.
Okay, so if I understand that correctly, if we approve this, you could go ahead and make this amendment. And then, when it comes time for us to vote on the overlay, it will be included in what we're voting for?
No.
No.
Because there's, it takes too much time for this amendment, if you authorize it, to get through the jointure, be reviewed, be reviewed by the Bucks County Planning Commission, and be advertised in time for that. So the ordinance that's currently out there will probably come off the table and be discussed and acted on by this board. Then we'll have, ready to go for a subsequent meeting of the board, this amendment that would change it from uses by right to uses by conditional use.
But that would require the jointure to approve the amendment?
That's correct.
Which are two other townships talking about our township and what's permissible in our township. Am I thinking...
No, you're not misstating. You're correct. Often, Joint Municipal Zoning Ordinance amendments only deal with one of the townships, like we did a Riding Academy amendment that only dealt with Upper Makefield or Wrightstown, one of the two. And that happens often. But yes, Wrightstown and Upper Makefield would be acting on ordinance that only affects Newtown.
Okay, we're going to have to twist their arm. I know I was in favor of doing this, so I'm going to go for it.
And I promise to gently twist their arms.
Excuse me?
I will gently twist their arms.
You're not me.
Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing solicitor to draft an amendment to the JMZO to provide that all uses in the LI/OLI overlay district are permitted by conditional use? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $7,267,972. And we'll note that that figure includes July real estate tax revenue that's meant for other funds. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. We have Chief Hearn in attendance this evening for his monthly chief's report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Chief, let us know when you're going to take a pickleball.
What was that, sir?
Let us know when you're going to take a pickleball.
Okay, sir.
Because you get a discount for a public servant.
Not interested, sir. Thank you.
I hear you.
June 2024 police report, we documented 2,274 calls for service. We logged 24,345 miles on our patrol fleet. For the month of June, we had 19 arrests, which included three wanted persons, one for molestation of a minor in Georgia, Tupac County Sheriff's warrants, one protection from abuse, one stolen auto, four thefts from Lululemon, and four narcotics possessions with six DUIs. There were six cases referred to detectives, some of which included a fatal crash on Swamp Road, one fraud, theft of a motor vehicle, two child line cases, and a fraud report. For the month of June, we also had 49 traffic crashes with the one fatal. 87 traffic citations were issued and 307 warnings were issued. Truck enforcement conducted three inspections. With 32 truck inspections, with 27 warnings issued, two vehicles were placed out of service and one vehicle was towed. Notable jobs for the month of June. On 6/28, as I mentioned, there was a fatal motorcycle crash in Wrightstown Township at 545 Swamp Road. Seventy-eight-year-old male operator died from his injuries sustained in the crash. On a positive note, the LPRs that we installed last, within the last 30 days, we've had three successful arrests from that LPR initiation. One included a sheriff's warrant out of Bucks County for a wanted subject, a stolen auto that was reported stolen, and the operator was from Philadelphia. And also, on Saturday, we had a homicide arrest that recently occurred in Benzam Township. So the LPR system is working to keep Newtown safe. Public service announcements for the month of June. We attended Newtown Day on June 9th. Rita's Wood Race with a cop event on June 27th. And for our architectural firm, he's still making progress with the building study and will be presenting a plan within the next week for presentation to the board for consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief? I was going to ask you about Swamp Road, but then you went into the detail. That's a shame.
Hi, Chief. I was amused to learn about this lodge bird that was on the loose in Newtown and that you found the owner of, I think.
The owner was from Upper Makefield Township, sir, yes.
Upper Makefield. Are they permitted to have such animals? Is this an endangered species?
I don't believe so, sir.
I don't think it's endangered. But it's a wild animal that's not a domestic pet.
Yeah, we don't have a...
Emu. I think there's plenty of emus around. I don't think it's endangered.
In Upper Makefield, maybe.
Maybe in Upper Makefield they are.
They're all selling Liberty Mutual. They're all selling Liberty Mutual insurance.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Enough, enough. It's enough. We're going to move us right along, right?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one item for the board's consideration remaining under our report. Bucks County Consortium solicited, once again this year, solicited bids for the purchase of fuel oil, or fuel and diesel fuel for equipment. Our public works director has included a memo in, in the packet for the board's consideration. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to approve the Bucks County Consortium fuel bid for 2023, 4/25.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Motion and a second. Any questions from the board? I, I had a question that occurred to me just before the meeting. How does this, how do these rates for fuel, the cost of fuel per gallon or per, how, how does it compare to previous years? Is it a lot more?
It's, it's comparable to this year.
Okay.
So it hasn't changed at all.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions for the public on this fuel bid? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the Bucks County Consortium fuel bid, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
That's all we have under our report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to minutes, bills, list, and reports. Mr. Mack?
Howdy. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 12th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 12th, 2024, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Okay. Next, I make a motion to approve the July 10, 2024 bills list totaling $550,572.30.
Second.
And motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our bills as listed on the July 10th, 2024 bills list, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Interfund transfers?
Yes. In a minute. I had a question maybe I should have asked. While looking, the bills list didn't show up until a couple of days ago. But I was looking on the drive and I found another bills list dated June 26, 2024. And there were bills and invoices on there that were not included in this July 10, 2024 bills list. Can you explain what's going on there?
That, that was the, that was the bills list run for the meeting that was canceled.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
That was the bills list run that was, the meeting on the 26th was canceled.
So we have not approved that bills list?
That's, that's correct.
Do we have to approve that?
You can, you can make a motion right now to, to do that. It should be on the agenda. We, we just missed it.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we approve the bills list of June 26, 2024? I don't have with me the amount of that.
That's fine. Just a generic approval's fine.
Okay. I didn't find anything wrong with it, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call that question. All those in favor of paying our bills as listed on the June 26th, 2024 bills list, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Okay. Finally...
Nice catch.
The transfer funds.
Yep.
Finally, I, I move that we approve the funds transfer of $349,552.30 as per the July 10, 2024 bills list.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discuss, further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our interfund transfers as listed on the July 10 bills list, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right. That brings us to our second round of public comment. Please don't forget to state your name and turn the microphone on and...
Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to begin by thanking Chief Hearn for all of his efforts that he gave, not only gave in his report, but also at the mid-block crosswalk at Newtown Yardley and Tara Boulevard. I continue to see people pulled over, and that's great, because this project has still faced delays. I'd like to also thank the person that came from Middletown and emphasized the fact that not only Newtown is looking for safe, a safe walking township, but Middletown is as well. And I think that reemphasizes the point that we've been trying to make in our efforts to have the mid-block crosswalk addressed in Newtown Trail. I'd also like to thank PennDOT openly and publicly for expediting the Newtown Yardley-Tara portion of this project. I've been in touch with them, as I think most of you know. And they not only have expedited at least the portion, the mid-block crosswalk, but they also kept this review process ticket open in light of the last omissions from their comments in order to just quickly get those approved. And I think you heard our township engineer say that those changes were made, as well as the additional wish list things, including the traffic light and the stanchion in the pedestrian refuge area. And those things are great, and they do plan on approving this, getting the two signatures by the end of this week. And thank you for addressing my questions that I sent in by email. Several questions weren't answered, and I just want to repeat those so that hopefully we can get an answer. And that was, and this was raised in a conversation with PennDOT. Has RBE been developing, number one, the bid requirements, number two, the advertising for the bid, and number three, the construction plan in parallel with their plan, permit plans, which they've had to go through several submissions for? So that's the first question. Has RBE been developing these things so that they're ready to go? And number two, I believe we heard the township engineer say that the submissions for these permits have now been split. Because I think I heard the, the engineer say that the silo part of the project, the bid plan is expected to be submitted. But we know that the bid pla, the permit plan for Newtown Yardley and Tara has been submitted and is to be approved this week. It's been my understanding and that of the other people in Newtown that this has been a joint project, both traveling, funded as one. Now I, I would ask, is that correct, what I heard you say?
There are two separate permit plans.
Okay.
For the two different locations.
Okay. And that leads to the next question is, therefore, when we get the approval this week, can the advertising and the bid requirements go out by the next BOs meeting? Or they now need to ask you for permission to put them out to bid at the next BOs meeting? That's the next step that requires the BOs approval in this process.
I, I don't want to get into a long back and forth, but we'll...
Yeah, that, that hasn't changed. I think that's been mentioned quite often.
I think we said...
We have to request, just like we did for the sidewalks. We, we can't put this out the bid without a vote.
That's right.
But we can shortly after the fact that we approve it.
To answer Mr. Foyer's first question, we can start on the bid documents as, as much as we can at this point. I mean, as we just saw, they just gave us comments that were unexpected just last week. I mean, had we started on the construction plans, we'd, we'd be revising them at this point. I don't think the township wants us to spend the time to do that work without getting the approval from PennDOT. So yes, there are things that we can do in the meantime, getting the specs together, getting the front-end specs together. But there are things that we need to wait until we get the PennDOT approval.
Which may be coming this week or shortly.
Which is hopefully coming this week.
Okay.
Right. So, and I think my real question is, and I'll make it very short. Are these being treated now as two projects with regard to PennDOT, with regard to the construction plan, with regard to the beginning of construction?
They have been two separate plans since the beginning.
I'm glad you clarified that. Thank you. And the last question I had was, can, if the BOs approves the, the bids to go out or to be advertised and go out, can this be achieved by the 31st of this month if we get approval permit from PennDOT at the end of this week? Thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Al DuFault, and I live in Newtown Walk. And I've got a question just as a follow-up to what Charlie's been asking. When I reviewed the permit plan, I understand there's two areas of responsibility that were given to the township. One was for the tree trimming necessary for line of sight, and the second one was identification of where the curbing was going to be located along, along the roadway. My question is, will these be addressed, these questions or areas of responsibility from the township be addressed in the construction drawings? And will the construction drawings be available for review prior to going out for bids? So we can look at what the extent of these, these tree trimming is about, whether it's going to encroach on our private property, and where the curbing is going to be improved. I've mentioned to the board prior to this that I feel there's an unsafe condition between the borough line and the cemetery driveway, requiring, I'd say, an upgrade to the sidewalk and an upgrade to the curbing along that stretch of roadway. So my question is, will these be addressed in the construction plans? And will construction plans be available for review prior to the board supervisors issuing and approving a bid, a bid release?
So I got, I got the first question. While I was writing the first question, I, I missed the second.
First question was the tree trimming?
Yep. That was the tree trimming and curbing, curbing and...
And the second item is the curbing, sent to the curbing, which become the responsibility of the township, as identified by PennDOT in the permit drawing.
And there was a, there was a question of will they be, will the construction plans be available?
Will they be available for review prior to the board voting on the bid documents?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. Valerie Mahalik, also from the Newtown Walk community. I would like to thank Jeff Werner for all that he does with covering not only everything in our community, but particularly all that he's been doing on pedestrian safety. Jeff, we really appreciate your time to be a part of this and help us get the word out. I have another article here that I'd like to submit by Jeff Werner regarding Doylestown. And the Doylestown Borough area had an incident with a pedestrian accident in a crosswalk as well. And the article is dated July 1st. So just like Kayla, is, is that how you say your name? Carla said earlier, from Middletown Township, this pedestrian safety initiative is not just in Newtown, but throughout the county, as our county attracts more and more people as a destination, and people are not paying attention as they are driving. So I would like to submit this article for review, again, to further our concerns for our mid-block crosswalk and the safety for all who use it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. We can check the patch, too. Any other comments this evening? Going once, going twice. Seeing none? Let me just review that there's no need for an executive session this evening? Any old or new business? I'll take them one at a time. Any old business? Any new business? All right. With that, and without objection, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming.